... from the April 12th, 2021 regular meeting until to tonight to reconvene on April the 19th, 2021. Establishment of a quorum. Got seven of seven. Mr. Allen, could you lead us in the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here tonight. Pray you watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us in each and everything we say and do to be in thy name and thy will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can make that announcement first.
Do you think change?
I don't know. We have two statements by, one, Mr. Miles, and the other one by Mr. Bryan.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, I have a statement regarding the budget and my involvement there, too. I'm advising that I have sought an opinion from the Commonwealth's attorney concerning any conflict I may have in participating in discussions and voting on the county's budget because I'm an employee of Piedmont Senior Resources. I have received a written opinion from Mr. Wright that I can participate in the discussions and vote on budget matters. The Code of Virginia requires that I make a statement concerning my situation. Accordingly, I make the following statement for the record. One, I will participate in the discussions and vote on matters relating to the adoption as well as the adoption of the 2020-2021 Board of Supervisors budget for the county. Two, I am an employee of Piedmont Senior Resources, which is funded in part by allocations from the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. Three, I am a member of a group employees of Piedmont Senior Resources, the group being more than three, which are affected by the transaction. Four, I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And five, I do not set the budget or authorize the expenditures of Piedmont Senior Resources. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I need to read a statement as well for the record. I'm advising that I have sought an opinion from the Commonwealth attorney concerning my conflict, any conflict I may have in participating in discussions and voting on the county's budget because I'm a schoolteacher for the Buckingham County School System. I've received a written opinion from Mr. Wright, and I can say that I can participate in discussions and vote on budget matters. The Code of Virginia requires that I make a statement concerning my situation. Accordingly, I make the following statement for the record. I will participate in the discussions and vote on matters relating to the adoption as well as the adoption of the 2021-2022 budget. Board of Supervisors for the county. I am a schoolteacher employed by the Buckingham County School Board, which is funded in part by allocations from the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. I am a member of profession, the members of which are affected by the transaction. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I do not set the budget or authorize the expenditures of Buckingham County School Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bryan, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Guess we need to open that up for discussion? Is there any statements or discussion needs to be made in that?
Yeah, the statement, we'd like to, we've been talking about this forestry thing, try to help with the woodcutters in Buckingham, and now we've got the understanding we've got to go through a public hearing to do what we'd like to do. So what step can we do tonight to get started on that?
I think we should formally commit it to study this.
We already have a finance committee, so it could go through that, and we could, we could add him to that committee, yes, sir, to represent the loggers.
Turn it over to the finance committee. Turn it over to the finance committee.
Yes, sir. We probably need a motion for that to let Mr. Jenkins serve on the finance committee concerning the Virginia Loggers Association to representing the loggers of Buckingham County.
Don't move.
I'll second that motion.
Just so I'm clear, Mr. Chairman, one question. What we're doing is we're adding the gentleman to the finance committee or participating in the finance committee, and then the finance committee is going to take the request up?
Yes, as a one-time situation. I think you need to set a public hearing after that's been approved or if not approved, we wouldn't have to do it.
Back from the finance committee first.
I think the committee would have to report out first, Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
Yeah.
Would you like to read that, Ms. Lance, so we can make sure we got it right?
That we have added Mr. Jenkins to the finance committee for a one-time situation for the logging.
As a consultant, I guess, would be the best terminology.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's the motion. We have a second for that?
Yes.
Off with the vote. Is any other discussion? Anybody else got anything else they'd like to say?
No, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good idea that we take time to study this. It's a very important discussion point. I know that a lot of folks on this board have been talking about it, you know, over the last week, and it's a big deal, so I think it's a wise choice that it go to committee for more discussion and bring back to the full board.
Just let's make it clear for the loggers and Mr. Jenkins, this is the first step of the process, so, you know, we're not saying no, you know, we want to study it and we want to learn more, just like, you know, Mr. Jenkins, you're representing and giving us, you gave us a lot of good information that we had asked for as far as what logging brings to Buckingham County in terms of dollars, and I appreciate that. I think it was over $10 million last year. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'll help us and give us a lot better understanding moving forward, and I'm sure we'll get a lot of other questions from the board, too, once we get into this process. So anyway, thank you so much. Okay, call for the vote. It's unanimous, seven to zip, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget as advertised.
Can you read all the rates, please?
Well, that's a separate agenda item. Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on this matter from the other board members?
Hold on.
Wait a minute, they didn't come back up yet. Right, six, one. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the tax rates for 2021-2022. Real estate, 52 cents. The public service corporation, 52 cents. The SCC, personal property at 405. Personal property at 405. Machinery and tools at 290. Merchants capital at $1 and aircraft at 55 cents.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? I'd like to say that there's been no change in those from last year. Am I correct on that?
Take good for COVID relief money.
Just letting everybody know, we stood up and did the right thing when we needed to do it to protect the citizens of Buckingham County, and actually, we had a tax reduction last year, so just want everybody to be clear on that.
From 55 to 52, I think, Mr. Chairman, is that right?
Yes, sir. Let's call for the vote. It's unanimous, seven to zip. Next item is the presentation, Buckingham County School System final fiscal year 21 budget update. Has there been a change?
Budget update to include the updated state revenues to reflect March 31st, ADM of 1,894.99. This update also includes the addition of the security grant as well as several small adjustments in federal grants. Also, in the cafeteria fund, we are adjusting the beginning balance to reflect the actual balance based on the completed audit as well as moving federal funds to the summer school
Mr. Carter, has those items been added and updated to the budget?
They will be once you approve them tonight, and this budget update as well does not include any changes to any local funding at all. It's all state and federal updates.
Yes.
I'll make a motion if it's approved.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. More time? Any discussion?
Please, one second.
Next item on the agenda is county attorney matters.
Yeah. There's a slight delay here.
Chairman, I have a few updates for you. Take them in the order of the Dominion Resolution. I think you all have before, you should have before your copies of the resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute on behalf of the county in agreement with Dominion Atlantic Coast Pipeline LLC, accepting the gift, half dollars to benefit local community through the support. Find that appropriate, I'd ask that you adopt that resolution.
So we need a motion to accept that?
Yes, if you adopt the resolution, that authorizes the exceptions, and it authorizes the signature of the conditions of the gift.
I make a motion to accept the resolution from Dominion for the 1.5 million.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the resolution from Dominion and call for the vote. Or any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I do think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I think that Dominion should be commended for stepping up to do the right thing in terms of helping us out with our EMS and investing in this community, and I'm very appreciative.
Absolutely. Unanimous, seven to zip. We're going to move forward to the next item, which is Centura Building update.
Mr. Chairman, we had a nice conversation with the, I guess, president-chairman by phone, and he told me to go ahead and make the revisions that we've talked about. I made a few revisions, sent them in to him. I got a confirmation email that he'd got them, he'd passed them on to legal. We're moving forward on a fairly positive thing. The next part will be a wait for their answer, but we don't anticipate any snags or problems, so that's progressing as it should.
And to clarify, Mr. Wright, that's for the building only?
No, that's the building and land. It does not include the fixtures involved with the medical practice. They probably in the next few weeks will come in and strip the building of the medical equipment and the things used in providing the medical services. It's just for the building and the land.
Thank you.
Do we need to take any action tonight?
No action required at this time.
All right, moving on to the next item, which is Haddon Ferry update.
You know, sometimes things don't move as fast as you'd like for them to, but that conversation is continuing. We have developed a draft agreement, sent that to Haddon to take a look at. They responded to say that the property list need to be updated. Some of the things they've gotten rid of, some of them they've replaced, so we're working on that, beginning to, at the same time, try to identify some potential groups that might be willing to accept the ferry operation, so once it comes to the county, you can pass it on to somebody who's eligible to take care of that. Certainly by the May meeting, we should be further down the road with that.
All right.
Those are the things I have.
Wrap that up. The next item is going to be, it's not on the agenda, but we're going to probably need to go into closed session for a few minutes, and I'm going to let Mr. Bryan.
I'm trying to find it now.
Just be patient.
Where's the agenda for the work session?
Hey, Paul, on my phone, real quick, do I?
Ward packets? You can go there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we go into executive closed session under 2.2-3711.1. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body and evaluation.
Is that it?
That's it.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, then we'll call for the vote. Raise your hand, Mr. Chambers. All right, all four is yes.